Good afternoon, everybody. I hope everyone can hear me. If any time during this meeting someone is speaking too low, could you kindly just raise up your hand? And if we can all pay attention to that hand raise, which means you can't raise your hand if you want to ask a question. Otherwise, we'll get confused. To make sure that everyone can be heard clearly. Okay, and then we'll ask the speaker to speak up a little bit. Or you can just adjust yourself if you see a hand raised. So the hour of four o'clock has arrived, and I'd like to call the Kane County Committee of the Whole, meeting of July 27, 2021, to order. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Allen.
Allen.
Bates.
Bates here.
Berman.
Berman here.
Brown.
Brown here.
Davist.
Davist here.
Ford. Fraz.
Here.
Ikbal.
Gums.
Here.
Kenyon.
Here.
Kayaus.
Kayaus present.
Kope. Leonard.
Leonard here.
Lewis. Martin.
Martin present.
Molina.
Molina present.
Sanchez. Shepro.
Shepro here.
Silva.
Silva's here.
Strathman.
Strathman here.
Tepe. Wallace.
Wallace here.
Wonicki. Wonicki here. Here.
We have a call.
Madam Chair, Ikbal is also here.
Mr. Ikbal is here.
Thank you, Mr. Ikbal.
And did Mr. Sanchez join? Yeah, I think Mr. Sanchez.
Sanchez is here.
Okay, very good.
He went out to get food because he was hungry.
Well, he has to bring us some.
Bring up all.
They have cookies. Mr. Leonard, could you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was really good. We finished in unison.
Attorney in charge. Good job. We've had some personnel changes up in the office, up in the board office. And due to those personnel changes, we're going to be asking your courtesy to defer our minutes from the last meeting until the August 24 meeting. And at that point, we'll be bringing you both today's and the previous minutes to you for your approval. Five seconds.
Second, Berman.
Oh, Shepro moving.
Need to call roll for that. Call, please.
Allen.
Allen, aye.
Bates.
Bates, aye.
Berman.
Berman, yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Davist.
Davist, yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Ikbal.
Yes.
Ikbal Gums.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Kayaus.
Kayaus, yes.
Kope.
Epstein, please.
Leonard.
Leonard, yes.
Lewis. Martin.
Martin, yes.
Molina.
Molina, yes.
Sanchez.
Sanchez, yes.
Shepro.
Shepro, yes.
Silva.
Silva, yes.
Strathman.
Strathman, yes.
Sergeus. Tepe.
Tepe, yes.
Wallace.
Wallace, yes.
Wonicki.
Yes.
Motion passes. Is there any public comment? Hearing none. I'd like to bring forward our presenters. But before we begin, I just would like to warn the board and potential members of the audience that the CDC has just come out with recent guidelines, and they are requesting that we start considering wearing our masks, especially all civic and public leaders, to show good faith. We know that the COVID variant, the Delta variant, is on the rise, and we want to ensure that our communities and our public remain safe so that we can maintain good health here in Kane County. So I'm not going to wear it today, but I did bring mine. So I would suggest, starting next week at our meetings, that you find your mask. And I agree. But both people who have not yet been vaccinated or who have been vaccinated, it is suggested by CDC that we begin to wearing our masks, especially when you're in public areas. If you're by yourself, if you're with your family, at a park, outside, walking a dog, you know, everything is fine, especially if you've been vaccinated. But I think all of us, as a good esprit de corps, should start wearing our masks again. So thank you for that consideration. So we've got a lot to talk about. Thank you. We already have a leading example. Go Cubs. Could the Veterans Commission, please, come up and begin your presentation?
Blair, do you have the?
Before we begin, I believe, I believe we have, what, five minutes? Five minutes.
Looking sharp today, Jake.
All right. Good afternoon. The Veterans Assistance Commission is requesting a $352,000, $393,000, $352,393 budget, slightly more than 3% higher than our current fiscal year. Important to note that although it is 3% more than the current fiscal year, the property tax levy for our special revenue fund remains flat, as it has for more than eight years. This budget was approved by the Veterans Assistance Commission governing delegates back in May unanimously. On this screen, you'll see our organizational chart. Very simple. One thing that I'll point out, as I have done in years past, is our work-study students that you see at the bottom there. It's important for me to share that the work-studies deliver a very important cost savings to the commission and therefore to the county. The VA pays these students $11 an hour, tax-free, as a supplement to their GI Bill benefit. And that provides our office with free helps from folks who've gone down the same life's path as our clients. And it also provides our staff with a much-needed safety relief valve to handle clerical tasks and telephone calls while we do our important casework. In fiscal year 2019, we obviously didn't have many during 2020 because of COVID. But in 2019, we had a total of 2,027 hours worked by those folks, which is more than one full-time equivalent employee. So that saved a substantial amount of money in our budget. And here is that budget on this slide. The pie chart on the left shows the Veterans Assistance Commission portion of the overall Kane County budget, if it were to remain unchanged from 2021, representing slightly more than 1/10 of 1% of the entire budget. Our slice of the pie is not quite distinguishable on the left. So we broke it out for you on the right there with all the percentage increases and the amounts. And some quick facts about our budget and the investment that it represents. We are not funded through the general fund at all. It's all through a special revenue fund and our own tax levy. Our staff was directly responsible for bringing in $4 million in new federal VA benefits for fiscal year 2020. And we're at over $2.7 million in the current fiscal year. So for every dollar of property tax revenue we received last year, we turned that into $13.17 that went in directly into veterans' pockets and their survivors' pockets, right here in Kane County. That's actual dollars in their pockets. And then I'd like to show the investment that the VA makes in our county, and this is the investment that we protect. And that's represented here with $127 million in annual expenditures in Kane County. So $58 million of that on VA healthcare for treating our veterans through the Hoffman Estates and Aurora Clinic, as well as Heinz VA Hospital. $59 million in direct disability payments. That's the dollars in the pockets of our veterans that they spend here in our local economy. And then $8 million for GI Bill benefits, which go to, some of it goes to the students, and some goes to our local colleges and universities. And our work touches all of these categories. We work closely with federal, state, and local partners to make certain that our county's veterans are getting the maximum possible benefit, taking a holistic approach to serving the veterans community, meaning that we look at all aspects of our client's welfare, not just what they're coming to us for. And then working with our partners, which really paid big dividends during COVID to make sure that those folks are getting the help that they earned. I'm not getting a click, Blair. Thank you. Here are the main budget categories. I'm not going to go into too much detail as you've already received a copy of the detailed budget request. The largest expense we have is, of course, our human capital, the wages and benefits for the four members of our team who do a remarkable and efficient job at what they do. $48,000 for contractual expenses, budgeted for things like financial assistance for indigent veterans, mandatory annual training to maintain our accreditation from the VA. It also funds a one-time training for veterans treatment court training that we haven't been able to go to because of COVID. And since our veterans treatment court is new, we want to take advantage of that. And then $6,200 for commodities, which covers things like office supplies, phone bills, software licenses, et cetera. And then workload versus budget over the last seven years. 177% increase in workload. That's in the number of forms we produce for our veterans and filing applications. At the same time, less than a percent increase in our budget. And that's thanks to part of our work-study students, the dedication of our staff, and then the excellent support we receive from IT and the force multiplication that that represents in technology. And then we've got the slide that the Finance Department asked us to include that has all the percentages of the different categories. Kind of covered that already. And then with six seconds remaining, our COVID-19 impact is not significant, so I won't go into too much detail on that. So be happy to take any questions that anybody has.
Are there any questions? Yes.
Kenyon, I'd make a comment. Since Jake Zimmerman arrived on the scene with his team, everything has been better. The light at the end of the tunnel got brighter. Our veterans are taken care of better than they ever were. So thank you for your work in assembling a great team.
Thank you for your support.
Oh, thank you. Yes, absolutely. Here, here. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Zimmerman.
You're now in the mood.
A law library.
Hi, everybody. My name's Haley Cox. I'm the Director of the Kane County Law Library and Self-Help Legal Center. Some of you I know, some of you I do not. So I'll keep this really short. I know I have less than five minutes. Rather than reading this front page to you in a nutshell, the central role of the Kane County Law Library includes creating informed consumers with realistic expectations of the legal system, while at the same time ensuring those have positive contact and experience between the public and the courts. Our primary customers are actually your constituents, the general public. So please feel free to refer people to the Kane County Law Library and Self-Help Legal Center if they have any questions, from ordinance questions, traffic tickets, to divorce and family law, to creating leases, landlord-tenant issues, pretty much anything will absolutely get people pointed in the right direction. Okay, as you can see, here's our organization chart. We are a small but mighty team. Going on to the public programs, these are just a few of the public programs that we also put on on an ongoing basis. Our lawyer in the library, unfortunately, we've had to, most of these we've had to cancel due to the pandemic. But we are currently looking at restarting them this next year. And some of them, we have actually moved, like divorce and family law help, we moved once the governor put the stay-at-home order. We actually moved to a call-in service for that. And we also instituted a chat service on our website so people could email, chat, or do a call-in service with us. So we're really looking forward to starting some of these, like family reading night with the judges, and our voice got La Merit badge today. We're really looking forward to continuing them in the near future. Sorry, I had fun playing with the transitions. As I said, a vast majority of our users are your constituents, the general public. 92% of our users are non-county employees. We service inmates at the jail. We service other, you know, law libraries, businesses, public libraries, the general public walk-in. So, and also, just so you know, these numbers do not reflect, we have an Illinois Justice Corps fellow that we've been granted again this year that we're very excited. And they help assist patrons as well within the justice system. So these numbers do not include the numbers that the Justice Corps people are assisting with. We also help people. This last year and a half, two years was Zoom Court. That has been a strong usage base for us. A lot of people, you would be shocked how many people still, especially with the pandemic, lost data plans, lost phones, you know, broken phones they can't replace, things, they have no internet service anymore. All the public libraries and coffee shops that they used internet services at went down. So we became a primary spot for them. We have iPads that people can use. We also have computers, scanners, things of that nature. I also wanted to share, we also were just awarded another, through the Administrative Office of the Illinois Courts, another $15,000 grant to help continue to assist self-represented litigants in our area. So that will continue to purchase remote databases and iPads and things of that nature. Here is the chart the Finance Department asked us to put together. The civil filings clearly have been down over the last couple of years due to the pandemic. But we really are expecting resurgence in them, especially with the eviction moratorium lifting soon. Otherwise, I'm a self-supporting fund, special fund. We get monies through civil filing fees, and that is exclusively how we run. So we're looking at no more than, you know, 4.5%, 5% increase for next year. So does anybody have any questions?
Are there any questions? Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I have a comment this time. Haley has been under budget.
Excuse me, name, please.
Oh, Wonicki. Haley has been under budget, as far as I know, for 20 years, probably since she's been there. So I think that's a great accomplishment, and thank you for that.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
You bet.
And again, I've put some charge keys over here on the press table, so help yourself. We also run a lawyer in the library program on a yield board public line.
I do have one question. The end of August, I believe, the rent abatement program will come to an end. Do you have any idea of how many more people you may be servicing to assist them through this?
We really don't. Through the, we've put up website resources. We're working very strongly. Kane County has put together a Kane County mediation, I mean, a Kane County eviction mediation program that I'm on their committee. And we're really looking at trying to push people to other resources, to mediation, to keep them out of the court system. So we're really working strongly. And all the local legal aid organizations, we're all working strongly together to try to not, to try to help people before they get to the court system.
And you'll keep us updated on those numbers and any needs you may have, technical needs to support.
Definitely. Great, thank you. I really appreciate that.
Merit Commission, please.
Unfortunately, I'm, I think, the oldest person in the room. So this thing and Zoom, I'm not going to be able to get there. All I can tell you about our budget is that we're $2,852 more than last year. And that's because of a 2% increase for our secretary, an increase in her health insurance, and a whopping $13 increase to her dental. Other than that, everything else is the same. I give my five minutes of time to anyone else.
Shortened. Does anybody have any questions? Mr. Burgett, that is probably the quickest budget report we've had. Del Santo.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Pat Del Santo. I'm the Regional Superintendent of Schools for Kane County. This is my first time standing before this group in 10 years that I've been Regional Superintendent, and I'm asking for a head count increase. So I'll talk more about that in a minute. Our role as the regional office is to advocate for education, perform leadership skill, things for the school districts, coordinate state and local services for educators, school districts, and community. One of the things that we do for the county is we provide the educational program at the Juvenile Justice Center. That program over there costs us about $500,000 a year that we generate to be able to provide those services to the students there. This year, it's cost us more than it usually does because we have put in new furniture. We've put in new furniture in the living pods. We've set up remote learning so that the kids that were in the quarantine unit could continue their learning. So that may sound strange that we did remote learning in a residential facility, but it was very necessary for the kids to continue their education. This year, these are some of our main functions. We trained 6,000, over 6,000 bus drivers. Every bus driver, every year, has to get a refresher course. We did 6,000 this year. Over 4,000 people were fingerprinted and background-checked. We did over 2,000 home visits, trying to find our kids who have never checked in online during the pandemic. And we issued almost 2,400 teacher licenses. The teachers are divided into a third, a third, and a third. So we have over, probably, almost 7,000 teachers in the county. One of the other large things that we did this year during COVID was we worked with our House Department and made sure our teachers were vaccinated. All the teachers that wanted to be were vaccinated in February. So that was a huge undertaking that our office coordinated. What we're asking for is an additional youth outreach worker, otherwise known as a truant officer. One of the mandates that we have as the county's responsibility is for truancy. Because of the pandemic, our caseload has exploded. We have a number of students that have not signed on in a year and a half. We have a number of students that we're going to have to go out and find and locate and get back to school once we start in-person again in the fall. So it will allow our truancy staff to have time to provide more intense interventions. There's a lot of mental health issues out there. It'll improve the attendance for all students on the caseload. We'll find the kids that are dropping out or missing school. And it'll give additional support services to families and refer them to social service agencies. We work very closely with 211. We've been a key funding source for 211 as well. And it'll better serve the students that are at risk of dropout due to attendance-related issues. We need to address the substantial issues of truancy. One additional officer will provide immense help to our community. We have nine school districts. We have about 120,000 students in the county. You can see, this is a chart of our referrals from FY '17 to FY '21. You can see where we are in FY 2021, which was not an in-person year, except for a couple of months. We had over 2,600 referrals, even when the kids were not in school face-to-face. We have five truant officers right now. If you divide that by the number of students in the county, that's 23,000 students per truant officer. The American Counseling Association recommends 250 to one. So we are proposing that we go from a head count of six to a head count of seven. The majority of the increase is in salary and benefits for that additional person. Okay? And I would be happy to take any questions.
Question. When you have the numbers at 23,089 students per five officers, and then the American School Counselor Association recommends 250 to one, is that a per-student ratio, or is that a per-truancy ratio?
That's per-student. We work with all of the kids. We don't just work with the kids that are missing right now. We work with those kids who have maybe missed two or three days of school, but they're unexcused. So we work with those kids and those families so that it doesn't become a habit, and we're not losing them, and they're not dropping out.
Very good.
I have a question.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hi, good afternoon. My question is.
Name, please.
Tom Kope.
Thank you, Mr. Kope.
Sorry. My question is regards to the bus drivers and the training. Is that an ongoing training, or is that?
Every bus driver, every year, has to have a two-hour class.
Oh, okay. Very well.
So if you're just starting to be a bus driver in your initial, you have an eight-hour class. After that, every year, you have to have a two-hour refresher course.
Okay, so my concern was as far as new bus drivers.
New bus drivers is an eight-hour course.
Do the new bus drivers, do they come to the, to your facility? Or for?
They do.
Do the new bus drivers, do they come to your facility for, for this employment with the CDL? Or do you provide the CDL?
No. They have to get the CDL through the Secretary of State.
Very well, thank you. Then children that are not going to school and truant, and you can't find them, and so on and so forth. Is it a matter of teaching the children and educating the children on why they need to be educated?
Some cases, it is. In other cases, there, we have an epidemic of mental health issues. And truancy is across the county. It's not just a socioeconomic issue. It crosses all boundaries.
What type of mental illness are we speaking on?
Suicide, ideation. We have depression, anxiety, those types of things.
Is it, is it, is it a vast, is it a vast, what do I want to say, application to those types of children? Or is it, is it a remote? What percentage-wise would you say?
Health issues? I'd say we're probably 80%.
Oh, my goodness. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, no. Sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bill Leonard. Mr. Santos, I was wondering if you could tell me. I looked at your need for one employee. I understand your request. I saw the salary of 46, benefits at 44,000. Why were the benefits such a high percentage of the salary?
Sure. I understand that. We had to take what the maximum benefits could be, should someone select those. So that would be the maximum. Chances are, we won't use that. But if someone were to select every benefit that the county has to offer, that's what the cost would be.
Smart to put worst-case scenario in there. Smart to put worst-case scenario in there, thank you.
Yes, Chris Caius, District 23. A question about the, you have seven truant officers, is that correct?
We have five.
Five and you want-
And I'd like to add one more. All the numbers, the headcount on there are not all truant officers. We also may have for licensure. We have health, life, safety inspectors that inspect the buildings. I have a staff of about 27. The county right now funds six of those positions. And the positions that the county funds are the ones that are mandated in statute that the county, are county services. The other services are not mandated in statute for the county and I fund them with other sources.
And the recommendation was 250 students per-
That's what the American Counseling Association-
And it's 23,000? How do we get from, has anybody gotten from where we're at to-
No, no one has gotten there. We can only try to make it better. I mean, my ideal, which is not pie in the sky, would be that we would have one per district. And we have nine districts. So at six, we're closing the gap.
Thank you.
Louis, could I speak?
Yes, Ms. Louis, of course.
Thank you, thank you. And I just had a question. So the schools, they don't have to supply any money towards these truancy officers? I was just kind of surprised that each of the schools doesn't have their own truancy officers.
They don't have funding for truancy officers. They do contribute to our budget, to the other five that I do have. So they do contribute an amount per student to our office. And that helps me fund the other five. The other five are also funded through a grant from the state, which is renewed every year. And we won't know if we get that grant until probably October this year because the state's so far behind.
Okay, yeah, I know. I live in Aurora and unfortunately too familiar with the truancy issues that we have, especially on these. And as you were absolutely correct, so much of it is mental health. And I was just shocked that the schools don't actually all have their own people. So it's very interesting, thank you.
Yes.
Ms. Shepper.
Thank you, Mr. Shepper.
If they reach the age of 16 and they don't show up, are they still considered truant or do they-
It's 17 now? Yeah, and no, they would be dropped. But then they're dropouts and that, we don't want that either.
No, not at all, not at all. Are there any other questions? Yes.
I want Kenyon, I'll keep up with Shepper. Your office does this more efficiently than if nine districts had to do each job.
Definitely.
And you have a consistent program of educating the bus drivers and all of that.
Right.
I can't believe this, but it's one of the wisdoms that the state of Illinois did establishing this. It works better for everybody.
Plus, we do have students that move from district to district. So this way, we have the central repository and we're the clearinghouse for the kids. So we know where our families are.
Mr. Shepper. I think he's raising you one.
Homeless student population with COVID and all of that, does that-
Yes, yes, there's definitely been an increase. And we do have a homeless liaison that works out of our office as well, working with those families. And she works with all of the liaisons in the school districts.
So to follow up on that, just as a good understanding, we have a potential growth in homelessness that may be occurring, hopefully not. But we have homeless now. And you have one liaison and who interfaces with all of the other school districts who also have support for their homeless population, is that accurate?
Each school district has a homeless liaison. That's not their only job that they do, though. They have other responsibilities in other areas of the school. So Elgin has one that's devoted to just being the homeless liaison. The rest of the districts, it's a part-time position and they have other responsibilities. The homeless liaison in our office is strictly homeless.
And can you share with us an estimate of how many homeless students we have in Kane County?
I can get back to you on that. I would hate to take a guess, I don't have that number in my head.
All right, very good.
But I'd be happy to get that for you.
And then I will share that with the board so that we all have an idea of what some of our students are facing. Any other questions?
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
If I may, this is Kope. If I may, ma'am, add to that, a reason why they would be homeless?
Microphone.
No, it's on.
A little bit louder then.
To add to that question that you had, Madam Chair, if we could add to that, what is the reason they are homeless?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make sure I include that. I have a feeling as many homeless situations we have, we have that many reasons. But I'll get that for you as well.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you, I think I used the merits, five minutes, too.
KaneCom.
Good afternoon, my name is Michelle Guthrie. I'm the Director of KaneCom. Happy to present our FY '22 budget today. KaneCom serves as a vital link between the citizens of Kane County and the public safety agencies devoted to protecting them. We are one of five, there's a total of five 911 centers in Kane County. The agencies that we dispatch for are listed above. The largest being the Kane County Sheriff's Office, which is approximately 80% of our business. We have seven police agencies, as well as seven fire departments and some other county departments as well. Just a quick snapshot on where we're at on this midpoint of the year, January through June. There's kind of a history there of the last five years. I provided this last year during my budget presentation as well. We saw a significant decrease last year because of COVID-19. And this is based on calls for service. So anything that we would receive a 911 call for that would generate a police or fire response. This does not take into account the number of phone calls that we receive. I can run that statistic as well. This is just calls for service or activity from our fire and police providers. Our organization remains the same. You know, we report to the KaneCom Board, the Public Safety Judicial Committee, as well as the County Board. In terms of management positions, we have the director position, deputy director and radio administrator. And then our telecommunicators, we have 18 positions covered by our collective bargaining agreement, three of which are our supervisor team. We are a special revenue agency and our revenue comes from our subscriber fees or the fees paid from the agencies that we dispatch for, as well as a large portion of our revenue coming from our 911 surcharge funds. So our anticipated revenue for next year is above. We do have, I wanted to say a balanced budget, but then I realized that we actually made an error and I'm $8,000 below budget, but I will cover that later in the slide. Our expenditures, the majority of it is our personnel. Some of our contractual expenses come from our radio tower lease, as well as some of the software that we use, ongoing training. Our transfer for funds that is listed there covers our phone line expenses and then our IT support from Rogers Group. So there's our total expenditures. Our personnel budget, which is the largest portion of our budget, I did expect a greater increase. It is only 0.56% of an increase. This is due to our telecommunicator vacancies. We had two senior telecommunicators that have moved on from the position, both 1 and 20 and 1 and 21. And due to our collective bargaining structure and the pay wages, their pay was substantially more than a starting telecommunicator. So that accounts for the difference. And just something important to note that that collective bargaining agreement does expire at the end of December. This is where my slight error is. The 2022 budget is actually opposite, so I'm just going to skip that slide there. We are $8,044 below. So our total budget, which should be balanced, is $2,299,601. And I am happy to answer any questions that anyone has.
Are there any questions? Yes.
I want to appeal, Kenyon, I'll give you my experience and Barb was here. It took us three or four tries before we got the right person to head this office. And she's the right lady.
Oh, wonderful. That's very nice.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
So the two empty vacancies that you referenced, do you have plans to fill those?
Yeah, so we actually have a total right now of four vacancies, which we're hiring for, we continually hire for, we are constantly in the hiring process. We just started a new telecommunicator this week. Then we have another position ready to go. Our challenge is typically trainers. You know, the job is incredibly stressful, just doing the natural work of a telecommunicator. And then having a new hire, you're almost working through somebody. So our challenge has been to find telecommunicators that feel comfortable and confident to train and work through someone as they learn the process. So we continue to think of creative ideas on how we can fill that training vacancy so we can fill more vacancies, if that makes sense. So that's where we're at on that. But the difference in the salary portion of that is the topped-out telecommunicator. We do have some language in our collective bargaining agreement where if someone applies and they have more experience, we can hire them at a higher level. So I did budget for that as well. You know, they can kind of be lowest in seniority, but they can jump a couple steps and that's accounted for in the budget.
Very good. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Office of Community Reinvestment.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the Board. My colleague Tracy Glassford and I are attending your meeting virtually today to present our Community Development Division's budget for 2022. If I could ask for the next slide, please. Our budget actually consists of nine special revenue funds that together total over $6 million for 2022. Our budget is a combination of federal funding that comes to us from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, as well as gaming revenue that the county receives from the Grand Victoria Casino in Elgin. Together, these external funding sources support a wide array of programming aimed at improving the community, especially in regards to housing quality, improving neighborhood infrastructure and providing critical social services to the public. During the current fiscal year, our staffing increased slightly to 10 full-time employees. And for fiscal year 2022, we're preparing a budget that maintains that headcount. Next slide, please. So this slide captures our org chart with the 10 full-time employees that I mentioned. It captures our current staff salaries and also projects the fringe benefits based on the rates provided by the Finance Department for the year ahead. Next slide. So what we're looking at here is a roll-up of our budgets for several special revenue funds, which are listed at the top of the slide. I'll just run through these. They include our Community Development Fund, the City of Elgin's Community Development Fund, which our office manages, the Home Fund, which provides funding for affordable housing, our National Foreclosure Settlement Fund, the City of St. Charles Housing Trust Fund, which our office also manages, as well as a variety of homeless initiatives, including administration of the Continuum of Care, our homeless management information system, as well as a homeless prevention program. Overall, we do expect about a 25% decrease in revenues and expenses for 2022. This is because we're expecting a continuation of a rather stagnant housing redevelopment market, which we're currently experiencing. As activity picks up, obviously, and more homes are purchased and redeveloped and resold, that naturally results in an increase in both revenue and expenses. But for the year ahead, we're expecting that to remain at a low level, hence the 25% decrease. Under the Personnel category, the increase is due to our accounting for the additional staff I mentioned earlier. Only for 2022, we've incorporated, obviously, a 12-month cost. So that naturally increases the budget. We've also accounted for a 2% cost of living increase, as well as a merit increase pool. We learned in 2020 that when additional funding opportunities present themselves, we do need to move quickly to capitalize on those. And I need the ability, obviously, to compensate staff for that additional workload. Under non-payroll expenses, the overall decrease is due again to what I mentioned earlier, the anticipated low number of homes that we'll be buying and redeveloping and reselling. I just want to note that these figures do not include a program that Madam Chair mentioned earlier, the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. You'll recall that our office is working in partnership with the Illinois Housing Development Authority and several other counties to implement that program. The first application round did close last week and we're going to be evaluating the status of the program and planning one or more additional application opportunities for the public. And so if that program does continue into the new fiscal year, starting on December 1, we obviously will bring a budget amendment to you for consideration. Next slide, please. And this is my final slide. I'm happy to report that we met with the Riverboat Committee earlier today and Fund 120 is your Grand Victoria Riverboat Fund. The committee was able to wrap up its deliberations over allocations for various county-sponsored projects. And so we have prepared a budget that aligns with their recommendations. As you can see, this budget is expected to see a decrease in revenue and expenses of approximately 30% for 2022. I think most of you are aware that we've seen an overall decline in proceeds from the casino over roughly the last decade. And so for 2022, we are relying on a combination of our 2021 proceeds, which you may recall totaled 1.95 million, as well as a portion of what we call the Riverboat Reserve or fund balance. And those two funding sources, as well as a modest amount of interest revenue, will cover our expenses for 2022. As you can see on the expense side, the major changes from the current fiscal year are that under contingency, we will not be adding additional funds to the reserve, hence the decline in the contingency number. And then under transfer to other funds, that in essence refers to the funding that is transferred to other departments to sponsor their activities for the year. That number is going up slightly, 5%. So that does conclude our budget presentation. At this time, we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions at all?
Madam Chair, anyone with a question?
Yes, of course.
Scott, is it a fair assumption-
Name, please, name, please.
John Martin, John Martin. Scott, is it a fair assumption that the funds we administer on behalf of other governmental bodies include monies to the county in reimbursement of our expenses or the cost of our assistance?
Yes, that is correct.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Berger.
Thank you.
Environmental Management.
Thank you, good afternoon. I have before you today the 2022 budget for Environmental and Water Resources Department. Oops, sorry. There you go. A quick review of our mission regarding the Environmental and Water Resources Department and programs that involve the Stormwater Management Program, recycling, waste recovery, sustainability activities under the county. And a quick review of those programs, quite extensive. This is our organization chart. We have seven full-time employees. Staffing was reduced in 2018, as well as a position eliminated in 2018 as well. Under our department, we have many different funds, special revenue, as well as general fund accounts. So I'll go through those briefly. The first fund is the Wetland Mitigation Fund. These are for wetlands that are impacted in the county and the funds are paid back to the county so we can establish new wetlands. This is pretty much a flat budget, there's not much change from last year. Our 650 Fund, we've spoken about quite a bit. This is the fund that was used to construct the cross-country course. This fund continues to be depleted. As in last, in previous years, I'm providing the amount of the depletion, this year being $56,000, as we continue to move off salaries and expenses from this fund to maintain the minimum $3 million budget. Specifically this year, we're requesting a half a salary to be moved over to the general fund. So you see a decrease in the union salary and wages of 39% over the 2021 budget. Our electric aggregation, while it's in the general fund, is a zero cost to the county. Revenues from the electric aggregation go to pay for one of our salary positions. So this is a net $27,000 in and $27,000 out. Our general fund budget, the main item of note on this one is that salary that's being moved over from the 650 Fund due to the construction of the cross-country course is agreed to. We're moving another half person over to make our total staffing under the general revenue budget of 5.83. Our cost-share drainage and NPDS programs are funded by the riverboat. We have a significant reduction in this fund this coming year due to the reduction in the riverboat revenues. Our 5314, our SBAs and our SSAs that were established in old neighborhoods to do construction projects to alleviate flooding and drainage issues. This has increased quite significantly this year. We have another project coming onboard. We have repayment funds that are coming back into this, as well as a project that was completed in the Wildwood West subdivision, which is one of our SSAs with a very strong drainage group in that subdivision. And they are proceeding with some of their construction projects. So the budget therefore increased. That's all I have and I'll take any questions.
Are there any questions? No? Yes.
Kenyon here. Remember way back, we started with a 16-inch rain, I think, over in your area, and flooded, and Mike McCoy saw the wisdom of planning ahead. And if you look in the- And if you look in the papers, we don't have the flooding problems a lot of other do, people do. And that's because of this young lady. She is a hard-working person that doesn't stop. She won't give up, and she doesn't put it off. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there, in your budget, any plan or is that going to be grant-funded for any research on our wells, identifying wells, and of course--
I'll tell him.
The aquifers? The reason why is I had a long, lengthy conversation with a counterpart in Joliet last Friday, and their concerns about the billions, not a B, billions of dollars that they're going to be expending tapping into Lake Michigan water.
That, the water sustainability portion of our projects has been historically funded by the Riverboat. There was a allocation of funds from the federal government during Denny Hastert's period that funded the Kane County's model that was completed. However, after that, we've used the Riverboat funding for that program. Due to the decrease in the Riverboat funding, we're continuing to look for additional funding sources. I did provide the American Recovery Fund Committee with some funding requests for that specifically. But currently, we only have $10,000 in the 405 Cost Share Drainage and NPDS for that, which is a drop in the bucket compared to what's needed, which is around a half a million dollars.
And is it still accurate that I-- Joliet is indicating that by 2030, which is nine years away, eight and a half years, actually, that their aquifers will be dry? I mean, it's, they're going to be dried. And I know it takes thousand years to fill up an aquifer. So basically, it's unusable. And are we still in our deadline of 2030, drying up of our aquifers? Or have you done any more recent research that's indicating that maybe a little bit longer than that?
It may be a little bit longer, and it's certainly not consistent across the county. We certainly have more issues down in the south and that are more impacted by the Joliet area than in the northern areas of our county. That's part of that half million dollars is getting, really drilling down to those numbers as to what we have supply-wise in the Fox River, in our shallow aquifers, in our deep aquifers, and what will be available and what is currently being used. CMAP has changed the population projections for Kane County. The original ones that were done during the Denny Hastert period study were quite a bit higher than what our estimates are now. And we are looking at different resource conservation methods to reduce the overall. And if you kind of speak with the City of Aurora, they're seeing that as well, that their use per capita, as more old fixtures are going offline and more conservation is coming online, they're actually seeing their number per capita drop. And so their water use is actually lower than it was 15 years ago. And so as we see those numbers moving and then we know better what our supply is, we'll be able to better project what and where we're going to have those issues.
Okay. The reason I'm speaking about this is I hope the board realizes the critical importance Kane County's natural resources are. And if we don't have water, it's very difficult to have economic development or even human development in any of our areas of Kane County. So it's critically important that we pay special attention to this.
And we certainly appreciate you continuing to send grant opportunities. Anyone that comes across those in our direction, we will continue to look for funding for the next piece of the Kane County puzzle.
Very good.
Berman here. I think we're very fortunate in Kane County. We have the Northwest Water Planning Group that is doing a fantastic job of seeing what our needs are and then working to how to improve upon our future. So we've got someone to really work towards that, which the Joliet area never had, or well, county never had. So we're far advanced in that, and I think we work together.
No, it'll, it'll, we'll keep on bringing it up until we have adequate solutions for the future of Kane County, especially the south end at this point. Thank you. Any other questions? I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Treasurer.
Good afternoon. I have before you the presentation for our budget request. Duties and responsibilities include the collecting, investing, and distributing[918.84][918.86]$1.3 billion in property taxes annually, of which Kane County represents just one of our 600-plus taxing districts. We prepare the distributions for the accounts payable, payroll, and the election judges and juror payments. And then we maintain county investments with consideration for safety, liquidity, and yield, talking about money management. Estimated average fund balance is $320 million. Here's our organization chart. You'll notice that we do have some seasonal part-time help, and those are used around the times that we're collecting taxes. Speaking of that, there are many ways to pay your taxes that are not actually physically walking into the office. But we do have our normal traffic that come in, whether it's COVID-19 or not. And so you will see lines outside the offices as we try to manage and collect those funds during those high-traffic times. The budget summary is there. One thing you'll note is that there is a new addition, or requesting a new addition, new employee, technically. This position, a financial analyst, has been in the office since December of 2020, but the position has been paid under the Tax Automation Fund. In looking in that, I think for issues of transparency and to actually pay that position out of what it comes, it should be the general fund. That person is responsible for new vendors, vendor changes, validations. That person has controls in place to protect the county from and against fraud of occurring. They do annual vendor reviews to try to protect the county's assets. Fund changes. We had a 2% increase for non-union wages. We also, a couple months ago, made sure that our part-time employees were getting paid at least the state minimum of $15 an hour. So those were all adjusted to make sure that they were getting paid the required state minimum. In 2020, we did miss a tax sale. We didn't miss it. Due to COVID-19, the tax sale was pushed off to beginning of this year. So there was a drop in revenue as a timing issue, but not as a issue of losing revenue. Looking at the numbers, though, because there was a three-month difference and when the tax sale occurred, we did have more people paying their taxes completely, so less properties went up for sale. Even with the new position from December 2020 being in the general fund, if it's approved as requested, we still generate a surplus in the general fund projected to be $678,405. Sorry, $678,405 for 2022. Our Tax Automation Fund budget remains the same over 2021 to 2022, and the same with our sale and error fund budget. That is in case a property goes up for a tax sale and it gets sold, and there's a problem or a, something wrong with the sale itself. The county has to sell it back and make the original person whole, sometimes paying interest for that sale. Any questions?
Are there any questions?
I have a question, ma'am. Thank you. This is Kopee. I've always wanted to ask this question because I was too lazy to read the annual report. How many single-family residences do we have on the tax rolls? And what portion of the revenue of the 3.1.3 billion can be applied to those residences?
I am sorry, but like others have said here, I don't want to pull an answer out that is not exact. I will get that answer directly to you or to Madam Chair. I'll send it to Madam Chair and still send it out. So you want to know single-family number and then percentage of that 1.3 billion?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, sir. I'll get that information.
The ancestor will give it to you in a second.
And that's probably where I'd go for it, because he is great for that information. And I want to make sure I give the true and accurate number.
And I will share that, of course, with the entire board. Anything else? Thank you very much. Auditor?
Hello. So in front of you, you'll find the budget for the auditor's office. So these are some of the highlights that we had in our office so far this year. We've created our internship program with, and we're working with the local colleges and universities. We've processed the remaining portions of the CARES Act. We are currently conducting our risk management assessment, and that will be done here in the next month or so. We are now completely paperless, so no more filing cabinets and not wasting paper. We were not fully able to remote in prior to my arrival, so now we all have laptops and full remote capabilities. And during the same timeframe, we worked to make sure that the county board's transition audits were done properly. For fiscal '22, we have reorganized our staffing model. We currently have two full-time positions and three part-time positions, as well as an intern. And we will continue utilizing an intern every semester that we have the option to do so. Our budget proposal does include the 2% annual increases. My salary does not change. And then, being that we have the majority of our staff being part-time, our benefits are only paid out to the two full-time employees, including myself. So this is our new organizational chart. You'll see that I'm up there. Underneath, I have a deputy, three staff auditors, and my intern. So with our headcount, once again, we've increased from four to six, if you include the intern. We are actually asking for an increase in our salary and wages of 1.4%. And that is less than a 2% increase that we would have, less than our 2% increase. The-- One of the changes that you'll see is the benefits. Benefits are actually going to be less for our office this year than they were previously because of our new model. Our contractual expenses are going to be slightly higher as we are increasing our training and the memberships and conferences have increased. And that is it.
Does anyone have any questions? So--
They're still sitting in my office at the moment.
The training, does the training also include your part-time workers? Do they get trained as well?
Yes. So we have the opportunity to assist in certifications and continuing education.
Very good. No other questions? Okay, excellent. Thank you, Ms. Wacken. Coroner.
Good afternoon, everyone. Well, the presentation won't be long, and I want to commend Madam Chair for running a very efficient meeting. Typically, when it came to me in these meetings, it was like 6:30. So I appreciate, and trust me, it used to go that way. So I truly appreciate you, the way that you run this meeting. Thank you. True.
I have control of--
Well, at least I'm here before 6:30, so I can claim that. Like I said, it will not be a long presentation, but it will be an accurate snapshot of what has occurred basically my entire tenure as coroner. I know that the mind, you know, thinks and pictures, so it's very important that I present some pictures. I was asked to just have a chart of numbers and that, but it doesn't really provide an actual correct snapshot of what is going on here. I wanted everybody to understand the totality of those circumstances. I know it's delayed. Bottom? There we go. Okay. If you remember nothing else from this entire presentation, I hope that this is burned into your memory. This is the last four years of what I've had to deal with. But if you go eight years, or a total of, a total of eight years or four more years before that, these charts will look exactly the same. You know, my, the previous administration, obviously, we had a contentious relationship, you could say. But this is where it really hurt, I think, the office. You know, the first number represents what we requested, and we painstakingly researched and evaluated the needs of the office based on those needs and trends, trends that were occurring the previous years, things that are out in the media that were occurring. So we came with a number that was requested. And so that, that number was then met with a adopted budget, which was very much would be the second bar, which was very low, very low, much lower than what we requested. And then if you go to the third bar, the third bar represents the adopted budget and the actual expenditures. So through the course of the last eight years, we've had all kinds of studies, surveys, you know, looking, is there something that we're doing wrong? We're not doing anything wrong. We're doing things the right way, the way they should be done. The problem is, is from day one, I was inherited a budget. I had been inherited, I inherited a budget that was based on a broken office, more or less. So this is why it was very, very important for me to show you this history. Because like I said, since I've started, this is exactly what it, the pattern that it has been. The resolutions back in 2018, it was about $175,000. We've been able to cover those resolutions either through some funds. I have one special fund, a 289 fund. But the 289 fund is basically a fund that we utilize to pay all of our commodities. So anything commodities-related comes out of that, that special fund. It says in the statutes that the autopsy and autopsy-related expenses must come from the general fund. Each year, obviously, the reason that the bars get taller is because our, unfortunately, our our volume has increased, whether it be actual deaths or types of deaths. And obviously, some deaths are much more expensive than others. Everybody will get a chance to look at this chart, so I'm going to move on. What were the increases overall? Just last year, we went from, you know, 3,283 deaths to 4,000. Actually, it's 4,079. I made an error there. So about a 24% increase in overall deaths, just from 19 to 20. Here's where the big issue is, autopsy-wise. We went from 254 to 330. Interestingly enough, now we're getting to a point to where it actually would be cheaper to have a full-time forensic pathologist. So that's one of the possible solutions I have. But, you know, when you talk about toxicology, obviously, it's very expensive as well. The bodies that were transported to Kane, to the coroner's office for different reasons. You know, we can't just leave a body there. We have to, we try to release as much as we can. But it, you know, we have to, if we have to remove the body, we have to remove the body. Another big issue that we're having is our unclaimed decedents. In 2019, we had nine, and last year, we had 25. So what do we do with people who will not, will not claim their loved ones? Well, we have to obviously have them cremated, because we can't put them in the cooler forever. We wait, obviously. We do our due diligence on the front end tremendously. And then we have them cremated, but that costs the county about $500. What's the translation? It's basically, and again, before we talk to any types of numbers, we have to deal with this. We have to deal with that original chart. My adopted budget that has been given is, was much less than the actual expenses and the predicted or are requested. Obviously, more cases we've had every year, more autopsies, more tox, more unclaims, more transports equals the-- equals the financial overages in the budget. Do we continue on the same path, or do we try to address this on the front end? Some things that we're looking at, like I said, hiring a possible full-time pathologist. I know right away, people are like, oh, my gosh, benefits and all that. Well, DuPage has a full-time pathologist. That pathologist makes about $194,000 a year. Benefits, maybe, I don't know, $30,000, $40,000. So that puts us close to 250. We paid out $455,000 in autopsies last year. So that's what I'm saying, is that we may be at a point to where it makes sense. Now, the problem is going to be finding somebody, because they're, they're very few and far between. We could also hire two full-time deputies, and that would vastly reduce our overtime. And I also have a position called para-deputy, which is an on-call position that would eliminate that position. Hiring one would actually help, because our, our para-deputies make a total of about $78,000, and then our overtime budget's about $88,000. So it may work out, and I'm willing to work with, you know, finance or whoever to look at those numbers to see if that makes sense. That's it. Like I said, I'm, I'm an open book. Any and all information that you want, I will give it to you. We have nothing to hide. We're a complete open book. So that's it.
Yes.
Frau speaking. Rob, if we were to hire a pathologist, would there be the possibility of other counties utilizing ours or somehow using it beyond our borders?
Yes, I mean, it would be. The, each and every coroner in each county is a kind of its own autonomous thing. So they would have to be okay with that, or their boards would have to pressure them to say, yay. But yes, if we had one, and there is one in Kendall County that actually works for Cook County full-time, I'm going to try to woo her to see if maybe she'll come out here, work full-time for us, and then continue on with her. But we'll see. I mean, there, there are very few and far between how many forensic pathologists are out there. So it's, it's going to be difficult to find one if she's not going to do it.
Thank you.
Please, go first.
Microphone, please.
Microphone.
Those are non-discretionary in most cases. I mean, you got to perform autopsies under certain conditions, and you can't do half an autopsy or not do them at all.
That's correct. Yes, there, I mean, when you look at the standards across the country, it's pretty, it's a pretty easy decision whether or not a, and we turn away autopsy, not turn away, but we don't do autopsies many times, because we can determine that death through medical records and whatnot. So, but for those that we can't, the statutes say it is in the public interest that an autopsy be performed, so I kind of have to do it.
I recall that when this was studied a few years back, it, there was actually a time under Mary Lou Carnes where there were far more autopsies performed per capita for the county than actually are done now. But nevertheless, our number still keeps going up.
Yes. Well, again, back when she was actually coroner, there were a lot of different standards and whatnot. I'm still cleaning up some of her mess. I'll just put it that way. When, when things aren't done correctly on the, on the front end, it comes back to haunt us later. So it's very, very important that we, we do things right on the first time. And it's, it's a heck of a lot cheaper to pay the $1,200, have the autopsy, than to have somebody come back and try to sue us, saying that we didn't perform our duties.
One last follow-up. What is the caseload that's carried by your current deputies compared to other counties?
DuPage is, is a little bit lower than us, but they have 10, 10 deputies, 6,700 cases. We're looking to go to seven, maybe eight. And with our caseload, I meant to say that our caseloads are not, does not, appear to be trending down. The overall cases right now, if you just took from July 3rd, I figured that was 180, what is it, 182 and a half, 184 days, whatever it is? And then multiply that times two, we're still trending to about 4,000 deaths. So, and again, that's all things considered, you know, equal right now. We don't know what the fall is going to bring. We, we have no idea. So, yeah.
As, just quick as a follow-up to that, the increase in deaths is COVID being one. But I'm sure autopsies are traditionally not done because of the COVID. But is it opioids? Is it drug addiction? Is this one of the reasons that this is spiking up?
All the above, yes. We had a 16% increase in opioid deaths from 19 to 20. The other, probably even bigger thing that is people weren't going to the doctor. So you had a large increase in natural deaths from people that should have actually gone to the doctor, did not, and then wind up passing away. And their doctor would not sign their death because they were relatively healthy. So that puts the burden upon me then to determine their death, because their actual physician would not sign the death certificate. So many of those cases wind up being natural deaths, but you don't know unless you look inside, and that's why we have to do what we do.
And that was the case of the pandemic?
Yes, the pandemic would, you know, because everybody was locked down, and we couldn't really go anywhere, and it was very diff, still is very difficult to get a doctor's appointment. You know, I, I called the other day to get an appointment, and November was the earliest I could get in. So that's kind of, it's kind of the ripple effect of, of what's going on. And when people don't go to the doctor and take care of themselves, they can pass away. I have to find out why, even if it's natural.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Kias, District 23. You went through the salaries and then the overtime pretty fast. I didn't quite catch it. Do you, did it sound like you had about as many hours of overtime as you did in, of actual?
Of the, no, the overtime and the para-deputies. So our, our actual salaries and wages is 622,000. So that's with the, the eight employees that I have. But when you're talking about, I need an extra pair of hands for the cots when we go to pick up a body. So I have this position called para-deputy, and they're only paid $18 an hour when they go out, because they're an on-call. To, to actually call up a deputy to do that now costs us time and a half. So it made total sense to me to have an on-call crew that could do that. And that's, unfortunately, that's, we've budgeted about $78,000 for that. And maybe less, maybe more, probably less, maybe a little less. But our overtime budget for those where we have like two incidents that occur at the same time, and they need to be timely taken care of, is $88,000, 250.
That was the two numbers, then I guess 78 for?
Yeah.
That, and 88 for overtime. So it seemed reasonable to work that way, and that's in your budget next year?
Well, that's what we're requesting, yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Tepi here. I believe that the sheriff's department transferred some funds so you could buy some equipment. Is that reflected in your budget this year, or?
No, no, that, that was actually a mishap with the COVID money. You know, again, I don't want to rehash old stuff, but basically, we, we had been told to order what we needed. So we did. I talked to the sheriff, and he was like, yeah, he was all on board with it, with a vehicle. But we actually ordered two of them. And then other forces took control of the COVID money, and it was determined that we, they were only going to pay for one through the COVID money. So the sheriff went ahead and graciously, you know, from one of his budgets, went ahead and paid for the other one.
But you're okay with equipment now, is my...
Yes, yeah, as far as vehicles, yes. And again, most of that, all of our equipment and all of our commodities come out of that 289 fund. So it's really not a, a general fund expense. It's, it's the autopsies that really have been hurting us.
Are there any other questions? Oh, we have many. Yes.
Jepro. How will the new x-ray machine impact your budget for that item? Because you used to have to take it and do it at the hospital, right?
Well, currently, we still have to, because we don't have possession of one yet. But it costs between $1,200 to $2,000 for each x-ray, each, each set of x-rays. So that will help offset some of the expenses. How much? Not enough to make a dent in the curves of the, the different bars. But it'll also increase our efficiency in the sense that if the, if the doctor wants to see something else, we could just x-ray it again.
Mr. Kope.
Kope. Hi, Rob. I just want to make sure that I read the bar chart correctly. The adopted budget for 2021 was roughly a million, 1.0. Did I get that right?
And then? A million 96 for 2018?
And then the expended was 1.56 million. Did, did I read that correctly?
Which part, which chart are you looking at?
To the right, 2021.
Oh, 2021, yes. Yeah, the, the actual, I'm sorry. The requested was a million 297. You're talking for 2021? Yeah. The, the requested was 1,297. What was given to us was 1,033.
Okay, I understand it.
And what we predict will end is about 1,005.
All right, so the question I have is in regards to the pathologists or the, the autopsies. How much was budgeted in the original budget for autopsies? Let's see.
For 2018?
No, 2021.
The current. 21, the current.
159, is that right?
159. And real quick, again, what was the, what do you think the total cost of an on-staff pathologist would be again?
My best guess is probably around 250.
250, okay. So, and as far as the cases, they increased by 25%. Autopsies, roughly 25%. Bodies transported, roughly 25%. And, but the autopsies were up by, by nearly 50%. So I see, I see your argument. And I appreciate the pictures that does wonders for a simple man. But the, the point that, the, the point that's belaboring me is if, if, if overall, if overall the costs have increased, or the, 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 the effects have increased by 25% and the difference in the autopsies does not equal 560,000, do, do... Is there any other way that we can shave some? Or do, is, is, is 1.5, is 1.5 the anticipated, is, is the anticipated ask for next, next session?
I guess I don't know your question, but what I can tell you is that the, it may not be relative, like the actual number of increase, because it depends on also not just the number of cases, but also the type of cases. So there's, you know, obviously, we had almost 1,000 more cases, of which only about half of those were COVID-related. So those were mostly returned to medical. We did do a few autopsies on those, because we weren't 100%. The person didn't have a doctor and that kind of thing. So, but also, the, one of the bigger numbers was the, the drugs, the drug deaths that occurred. Now, you've got natural deaths that don't have any also, that were not COVID-related, that we have to open up and look inside. So that's, it, it's not just the number of deaths, it's also the types of deaths, because some are more expensive than others. A simple person passes away at the hospital or on hospice or something, those are relatively not very expensive types of death. Or somebody that has a chronic condition that dies at home. We may be able to utilize the, the records to determine that death. But for somebody who, who passes away at home, and number one, if a doctor's not willing to sign, or number two, we simply don't know exactly what killed them, we have to, we have to step up our investigation and unfortunately spend the money to do it.
Madam Chairman, if I may just make a comment from my own, from my own perspective, and that is, 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 it's not, it's not a point that the, that the coroner had, say, blew the budget. It's, the point is, is that it's very unpredictable, and that the budget may have been too, too slight to begin with. And I'd have to take that into consideration in the next, in the next session. Thank you for your time.
I think your comment is to point. It seems to me that some of these deaths could be controlled, which is welcomed. Opioid, as we've put money perhaps into one area to fight opioid addictions, drug addictions, it will relieve the coroner, because opioid addictions will decrease. A healthy community, meaning we fight the, the Delta variant, which is on the rise right now here in Kane County, as, and it's across Illinois, as we put that to abate by asking for masks or vaccines, whichever the individual feels most appropriate. We will have less people getting sick. And I believe the number right now of deaths is anywhere hovering, I recently counted anywhere from 815 this year to 820 people have died in Kane County because of COVID. So, yeah, that, those, those deaths were preventable, completely preventable. So I, with good, with stewardship through our health department and other activities, education, and asking for our public, hopefully, your costs will go down.
That would be nice.
I agree.
I'd welcome that.
We agree. Yes, Swinicki.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Swinicki, just, I'm going to pick up comments where Kenyon has left off. You know, being a longtime-serving board member, the coroner's office was an absolute mess before Rob got here. And he walked into something that was very, very difficult, in a difficult building, the garage out back. And for the newer members, there were, there was a garage full of cremains dating back, I think, to the 1950s. Am I correct?
Correct, yes.
And that was one of the first things Rob did, is he found a home for those cremains that nobody had claimed, their relatives, their children, what, you know, whatever. And he found a home at the St. Charles Cemetery. And I think the township donated a mausoleum, and they were all put in the mausoleum. So I'm just really happy to see of a new building. You, you have a great staff, too, by the way. They're awesome. So just wanted to add that.
Well said, well said. Any other questions? Thank you. Judicial technology.
All right. Good evening. I'm Roger Fonstock with the County IT Department. I'm here to present the judicial technology sales tax budget, commonly referred to as Fund 127. This is specific to the court case management system. So for those of you that are unaware of, of the history of the court case management system, you can go all the way back to about 2008, when the RTA sales tax provided a quarter cent sales tax for public transportation improvements and public safety. At that time, this was just a conception to use that money for public safety and, and the courts. But about 2011, there was a court settlement that created a Judicial Public Safety Technology Commission, which has been later named the Judicial Public Safety Strategic Planning Technology Commission. So from 2011 to 2013, they studied the court case management system. And in about 2014, decided to go out to an RFP and buy a system. 2016, they, they bought and implemented a system and paid about $12 million from that sales tax money to purchase, implement, and supply a system for the court clerk's office, the judiciary, the state's attorney, public defender. So all those offices were provided a comprehensive court case management system. So this fund, the 127 fund, is where they, they paid for the court system. And then what you'll see in the budget is that they pay for basically three, four things. They pay primarily the maintenance of that $12 million software system, which is about $580,000 in maintenance per year. Then we pay for some personnel out of that, which we're going to be asking to add some personnel. We're going to ask for an additional two software developers slash analysts. Then we pay for some consulting services to help integrate that system between the sheriff and the... between the sheriff and the adult probation and the courts. So that's kind of the, you know, couple mile view from overhead of what this fund does. If we can get this to work, we'll go in. So what we're looking at right now is our headcount. In this program, we spent about five years trying to get people out of this budget because this was a large capital project. It was not meant to be necessarily an operating budget for the courts. We have one process manager that manages the software right now. And we are looking at two analyst positions that will work with the software through our help desk. So you'll see current is one. And we're talking about two people being added to the 2022 budget. I would like to point out that the budget is a special revenue budget from sales tax. So it's not a general fund budget and the revenue has to match the expenses. So you have a sales tax revenue and then we have these expenses. So for 2022, we're looking at a request for two new people. And that results in an increase, obviously, of about $164,000 in 2022 for the salaries and the health and dental. So you'll see the increase in there. I think about 100,000 of it is the salaries and 70,000 is somewhere around there is the benefits for those people. And that's over 2021. So this is the revenue and expenses. You'll see the revenue and the use of $11,000 in cash in the fund balance that balances the budget. There's about 1.1 million in revenue that we spread across salaries and wages. The biggest increase, obviously, is the wages and benefits. And that's the two additional people. They're about $50,000 employees plus their benefits. And we've been talking with the stakeholders, which are the judiciary, the chief judge, Clint Hall, state's attorney, Mosser, and court clerk Barrero, and then also the public defender, about adding these two people to this fund. The commission is yet to meet to discuss this fund, but they've generally supported our efforts to try and get more help to deal with some of the integration issues. But those salaries are in the top couple of lines, the salary and benefits. And that's, that's the primary increase. Contractual and consulting services are services that we use to hire contractors to help us with integration points. A lot of that would be Tyler Technology and then a couple consultants we use for software development. And you'll see the software licensing costs, it's 580,500. And then the other piece of that, the $25,000 in training, conference and meetings. We actually have a person from each of the different respective offices and a person from IT that attend two conferences or meetings. They've been online, but they actually send, we send people from all the different judiciary offices to Tyler training conferences. So the total expenses for that budget is 1.1 million and that matches the revenue that's available to that. So that, again, that's coming from the RTA sales tax. It's 6% of the RTA sales tax total. So it's 6% of, I think, 16.3 million dollars, something like that. This is the breakdown of the budget based on what finance had asked us to provide. And it shows you again, the personnel expenses going from about $100,000 in 2021 and increasing to almost $200,000 in 2022. And then you'll see the benefits increasing from 28,000 to 75,390. And the rest of the budget is static. So not any changes other than the personnel. So again, the total budget in 2021 was $980,000. And in 2022, it's 1.1 million. And again, the primary or the main increase between the two years would be the increase in the two staff members that we're looking for doing analysts and support of the systems in the judiciary. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those or review any of the numbers.
Are there any questions? Yes.
Tepi here. Roger, what would these two people accomplish?
These two people basically would be available to work with the stakeholders, which is the chief judge, state's attorney, public defender, and the court clerk. They would work with them on their priorities. So we have a list of about 18 projects right now that the judiciary wants. We're working on those. We do not have enough resources, staff, to handle all the projects and requests. So we had asked them about funding two additional staff from this special fund to try to get more people to address the support of those applications and help with integration. So I think the problem you'll see is if we don't have these two people, we're prioritizing fewer of those 18 projects. And that's just simply their choice at that point. Which priorities do they ask for? In the last year, the priority was to upgrade the $12 million investment to a current version, which we completed. And then another project that they asked us to do was a rewrite of the entire electronic court orders system, which we completed the initial rewrite of that system this year. They, again, they have, you know, 18 projects that are queued up and we need analysts and people to go support them to get the requirements, to do the development work. And honestly, we could probably use more people. But I know the budget is constrained to 1.1 million.
Thanks.
Any other questions? I have one. The RTA sales tax, how is that? Is that going to remain stable? Is it going to go down?
I think this year we're projecting it going up based on what I'm seeing in the revenue projections from finance. It's modest increase. It's not tremendous. It's quarter cent. I think, you know, we do have a fund balance for the 127 fund. I believe it's somewhere right around a half a million dollars fund balance. So we haven't been spending all of the money every year and pacing ourselves. But a lot of that has been reducing staff out of the fund so that we could accommodate more contractual services. And now we're looking at kind of flipping that and saying we would like to get a couple people to be. It's not going away.
I'm sorry, Roger, this, you say that this, this is Kias. Could you go back to your funding slide?
Sure.
I just want to.
Let's see.
Let's be the other way.
This one or this one? That's probably clearer.
Yeah. So your revenue is, because it's a taxing?
It's a, it's a sales tax.
We're limited to exactly what comes in then?
Yes, there's, like I said, I think it's 16.3 million dollars that comes in through the RTA sales tax. It's, I think, 85% or 82% goes to transportation projects. 3% goes to contingency. 6% goes to the judicial 127 fund and 9% goes to the sheriff's public safety, which Mr. Anzik's going to talk about in a minute. The other 9%.
And you're, in your budget, you're going to be asking us to hire two more people? To permit two more people to be hired, is that what?
In the 127 fund.
127 fund, but you have funds to cover those.
It's in that revenue, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Fine, any other questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Public safety sales tax funds.
Joe Anzik from Finance Department. This is not really our budget necessarily, but because it's a combination of budgets from the IT department and the sheriff's office, we, we put it together for them. Hopefully I have this right. Okay, just looking at the revenue. Again, this is RTA, RTA sales tax revenue. It's 9% of the total RTA sales tax revenue. The reason for the $185,000 increase is that we had lowered the budget for 2021 because that was our best estimate of what the impact of the pandemic would be on RTA sales tax. And now we're looking for 2022 to be back up to where we think it would have been had it not been for the pandemic. And that's based on how it's actually been recovering already in 2021. And then there's a small amount of investment income. That's based on the fund balance. We are projecting to use $420,000 of the cash balance on hand. In 2021, there were two transfers into this fund that will not be repeated again. In 2022, there was a small transfer of COVID savings into the fund. And this was the amount that was transferred in to pay for that extra ambulance, that extra vehicle. This came from the sheriff's savings in his area. So this is what the coroner was referring to earlier and someone asked about. This was the fund it was actually paid out of. And that 219,000 was the funds being transferred in to pay for it. There was also, if you might remember, there was an error in the way the fees were calculated for the children's waiting room. And so there was roughly $465,000 more fees collected for the children's waiting room than should have been. They really should have been going into the court security fund. So this transfer was a way to rectify that. So children's waiting room transferred $465,000 of the excess into this fund. And the reason why it went into this fund is because the court security fund was closed and the balance in the court security fund was transferred to this fund to help pay for sheriff's vehicles. So that's the long story of these few numbers here. Then basically, this next slide shows you what all is paid for out of this fund. There, in the IT side of things, they maintain the fiber optic system with this fund. So there's $200,000 for consulting fees to help with that. And then if you look a little bit further downward says communication equipment. Those three line items there are for the rest of the fiber maintenance expense. Above that, under the software maintenance, those are the various public safety related software maintenance fees that are paid out of this fund. And then down towards the bottom, you have the sheriff's portion of this fund. He's paying the annual lease for the body cameras. I think it's a five-year lease and this will be the second year in 2022 of that lease. Last year, he also paid for some communication equipment that will not be repeated again in 2022. And then there's about $450,000 planned to be spent for sheriff's vehicles. So that's the total expenses for this fund, I think. And then this just gives you an idea of what the fund balance is and what the cash balance is. So it's just, just around a half a million dollars. And most of that are funds that were set aside by the sheriff. So most of this balance will be utilized by him in the future. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? So the fund balance, will that be depleted as of next year?
It shouldn't be. I mean, we would, it would, no, it will not be depleted. We need to maintain a small, a fund balance, but the budget would be adjusted accordingly.
So how much should be in the fund balance?
Well, we try to, we try to have about two to three months' worth of expenses in the fund balance just to, for cash flow purposes.
Are there any other questions? No? Thank you very much. And that concludes our presentation.
Most of our German?
One more? We have to ask the question, is there a need for executive session? None?
Be locked out. Better be lucky.
Entertaining most of it.
Do I have a second? By consensus, I believe. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
I'm hearing none.